Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We're really excited to have Ron Wutlow with us, a consultant that worked on our strategic plan. I'll let him do a little introduction, but before that, I just want to also, we have Suzanne Wallace, our beach manager with us from Ontario Volleyball, and Alicia Lytham's our director of operations. So Ron, if you want to give us a little intro and then I'll jump into the agenda.
Yeah, for sure. My background is in a non-white ball sport. How could I leave it at that? A team sport, similarities to volleyball, but I've actually been doing work with volleyball for, oh, I don't know, six or seven years. I started with Volleyball Canada. In fact, Joanne and I first met at the first session that I ran with Volleyball Canada. So I've been really excited about the work with Ontario Volleyball. But in terms of my background, I have a background in coaching, sport leadership. Currently, I'm the lead high-performance coaching advisor for Own the Podium. And then I have a capacity of time that I spend with groups like yours. And this has been a super cool project. And I'm excited to share where we've landed with this group, Joanne. So thanks for the chance to do an intro.
Thanks, Tom. I will go right into our presentation here. So I attempted to share, so if I'm not sharing, someone tell me.
Perfect. And sorry, just to jump in, Jo, if anyone has any questions, please just enter them into the chat box and we'll address them later on.
Yeah, so Alicia will monitor that chat box for us. And we'll kind of break them into some questions, especially if you have some for Ron around the strategic plan. And then if you have some relating to the OVA and some of our current operations or different things around what happened in the last strategic plan, we can address those as well. So just to start off, we do have a couple other OVA sessions running tonight. So if you think you're in the one for coaches or referees, that's not us. We're going over a strategic plan. And we're super excited to take some time to really look back and reflect on some of the changes that have happened over the OVA from our last plan. We can't believe that we are done five years from fiscal 2016 to 2020. So I will give you a little background. Our fiscal year ends on August. So that's why we always refer to it as our fiscal. It is different than a calendar year. So we run from September through to August, just to kind of match with some of our seasons of play. So I'm going to run through some of our highlights for fiscal 2016-20. Very few, because we could spend the whole hour just talking about that and having fun. And then Ron's going to take us through the process that we went through and take us through the planning and the status of where we're at with our current, with the new plan that we're currently in for fiscal 2021 to '25 and those components. And then we'll just close off with a little bit of how we're operating right now in this fiscal 2021. Sorry to even have to put the COVID word up here. And as we said, we'll go through some Q and A. So I'll just jump into that. So I mean, just quickly, a strategic plan. There are so many mandates and such a breadth that our organization has to cover. So we really use our strategic plan to focus in on our priorities. And that's why we're really glad to have Ron come on and really get some community engagement and look to what you are as members, your focus areas. And then we have to tie those in with our, what is our compliance from the ministry and the sports system that we operate in. So we have mandates from the ministry on participation, running Team Ontario's Ontario Championships, making sure that it's a fun, safe environment for volleyball in our province. And our discipline in volleyball are indoor beach and city. So that's really what the strategic plan will guide us to and focus on getting a plan done in five years. So our plan from 2016 to 2020, we loved it. We got lots of exciting projects done with it. It covered off these strategic priority areas that you see here with the athlete, operations excellence, facilities, coaches and officials, programs, competitions, and of course, our team material, high-performance piece. So I just wanted to run through a couple of our highlights, as I said. Obviously, every year, we have our annual report that reports on our strategic plan, what happened, and even covers off all the areas and details of participation numbers and what programs were launched and all the fun facts around volleyball in the province. So some of the programs that actually, this curriculum didn't exist prior to the fiscal 2016-2020. I'm going to mess up all the years all night long here. So we have Smash Ball, something, a new program that came over from the Netherlands. Spikes on the Beach was an extension of our very successful Spikes program. We also created curriculum around parents and players and also hoops and spikes, looking at different ways to get kids at a younger age involved in our sport. As we know, our sport isn't easy. It's pretty technical. But if we get the kids in younger and if they love volleyball, they're in. And then we can just really hook them in with our Volleyball for Life motto. So that's something that, along with that, we also launched a parent handbook to really just help sport parents and what is grassroots? What are the different programs? What can your kids do? And run through the different pathways with them. Oh, our fun, our pinnacle, Ontario Championships. The growth of this has been phenomenal. So we really did, there's a key piece of our strategic plan with Ontario Championships and growing it because we grow our sport under this really festival environment. And so what ends up happening is it just grows the grassroots programming around it. Any, these players play beach volleyball. And it really brings together our sport and promotes our sport. So this was actually part of our plan to really ramp up this festival and host it in Ontario in 2020, and we will leave it at that. But that's the part where our growth over those years of the teams, this graph says it all. And that's something that we always looked at, how we can have capacity for more teams, how we can support our clubs, how can we support the coaches? How can we keep having programming to run and have more players in Ontario play volleyball? The other piece of this that really stung when we had to cancel 2020 was, this was, 2020 was going to be the very first year we were going to have a city in Ontario Championships for sitting volleyball. So again, that was part of our strategic plan, but we will move on from there. And beach volleyball, Suze, thanks for joining us because we love it. We really had, beach facilities in Ontario was tough. We have 100 courts down at Ash Bridges, but that's not the easiest for everyone to get to every weekend. And as we know, summer is short in Ontario and in Canada, so it's not a long season. So we really looked to adding facilities throughout our province. So we didn't, we could expand beach volleyball, get more of the athletes playing, and it worked. So I mean, Suze's Ontario Beach Championships went up 20% in 2019, which we were really excited about. And so it was a good way to expand beach volleyball across the province just by having more facilities for the athletes to play at. And we also really wanted to also provide volleyball throughout the year. So there was winter beach tours that sold out all year long. And we're also going to struggle with facilities again for that with some indoor beach. So that's something for beach volleyball that was really exciting. Pathways, we really had a lot of gaps within our team material programming. So there was a lot of additions over the five years to really try to have the athletes flow from one program to another. So for example, team material white didn't exist. Team material red had just started. We also put a lot of effort into integrating the beach and indoor. We had lots of volleyball athletes, but some athletes, because of those limited beach facilities, hadn't even been exposed to beach. So with this pathway, we created an athlete identification process that looked at almost 1,000 athletes over the last couple of years. But what it also did was also provided more athletes to jump into beach. So the Tall Maples Regional Team Material White athletes, when they joined our camp, they actually went to beach sessions and indoor sessions. And then as they move into red, black, and lead the older, they split into the beach and indoor. So it really expanded our beach athletes. And that was something that we're really excited to continue with and continue to add to our team material programming. And with that came the expansion of the coaches and the coach pathway. So how do we get the coaches in? How do we bring them together? So it led into many things, a mentorship opportunities, a TMO coach seminar, which this past season we had to do virtually, but it was still great to have all the coaches together. And so this coach pathway again has really expanded our number of coaches, which then expands our community and expands them back into the clubs and back into other areas. We always have lots of fun stuff. So this one, I just put up a few things, but we really promote our sport by running, always supporting multi-sport games. So our staff are down to the Invictus Games, the North American Indigenous Games. There's always Ontario Summer Games, the Para Sport Games. We launched Ontario Volleyball Hall of Fame, which was really, really great to start documenting and really highlighting the, there was like, we have so many individuals from Ontario that have supported the growth of our sport. And to dive into that history and make sure that we actually have that documented, that's something that we've been working through to be able to preserve. Also, our referees launched a mentorship program, which now Volleyball Canada has even taken that on throughout the country. So that's another really exciting piece. And our Team Ontario successes have been numerous. So I mean, this was a highlight where our boys actually won the Canada Games, which was, there has not been many Team Ontario teams that have won the Canada Games. I mean, it sounds like Ontario always wins, Ontario always wins. But this was a really huge success, along with we've had numerous medals in the Canada Games and even at an international at the U.S. High Performance, we have had teams that have won medals. And then the other piece that always ties in with our plan is how do we help our athletes get ready for this? And how do we help them get on the world stage? So it's pretty neat to see two Ontario athletes that directly come from Ontario volleyball programs to be world champions now. So I could keep talking about our highlights forever, but I will pass it over to Ron. He's going to take us through his presentation on the strategic planning process. So it was really neat when the board wanted to tackle our strategic planning process. And so as much as we have our past plan covered off our areas, we knew we had gaps we wanted to dive into. So it was great to have Ron take us through and really have a lot of community sessions with us. So thanks, Ron. You're muted.
I'm there, I'm there. One step behind.
We're here.
Thanks. So if I...
I'm going to stop sharing.
Okay, perfect. Great. Okay, so just bear with me. I'm going to pop my screen up here so I can take you on a bit of a guide.
Ron, you're muted again.
Bear with me.
That's okay. So we didn't get anything, so you just start again, just to redo.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
I can't hear anything you said before.
Okay, great. Okay, so as Joanne, as Joanne said, every organization like the OVA, any provincial body that received government funding or is ultimately given the responsibility of leading a sport in a province has obligations to produce a strategic plan. And there's different perspectives on strategic plans. There's, you know, it's a box-taking exercise and that only one group of the people really need to be paying attention to this. And when Joanne reached out to me after getting to know one another through the Volleyball Canada at work, I was really excited, really curious about, you know, how seriously were they going to be taking this? And talked to board members, and it was pretty clear that they were up for doing something slightly different. But I also saw back in the previous strategic plan that the bones were really sound and that there was obviously a commitment to this. So, you know, I knew that there was tremendous potential to have a successful outcome. And that's not always how I feel as a consultant. As I mentioned before, I do most of my work with All the Podium in the Coaching Enhancement Program, but work with what it does in organizations throughout the year. And so I knew that there was something different about the work with Ontario Volleyball. Part of it was the momentum you had in terms of your growth and all the different things going on. There were really good news stories for the organization. So what you see on the slide here, folks, is the journey that we went on. And it started actually before phase one, and that was in conversations around, what does this need to look like? And what does your previous plan look like? And we started in person on a Sunday, a very icy Sunday that, I won't forget that weather, actually. I've never tried to chip off so much ice off my car after several hours in the parking lot. But I had a great day indoors on that day with a large group of people, some of them that are on the call today, I know. And we talked a bit about, you know, what does a good provincial sport body look like? Specifically, specific to volleyball. And so I'll show you a few of your images actually from that day. But we started there and had a good start. And we were intending to do a bunch of live sessions in 2020. And then a little hiccup called COVID hit us. And Joanne and I got back on the phone and said, look, we can continue with the same plan, phase two, virtually. And we did just that. We had a, really, I would describe as an incredible three sessions with staff members and board members in May. I say incredible because all of us were really leaning into this concept of doing things virtually for the first time, but it was highly productive. Felt like we got a lot done. Subsequent to that, we did a community outreach through surveys, and 1,000 people completed surveys on what their perspective was on the priorities for the OVA and what the opportunities were, among other things. And you'll see a little bit of that in a moment. And then we offered up a chance for community members, volleyball community members, to have a say in that survey feedback. What do you think of these priorities? What's the essence of some of this data? So those went really well, small groups, but powerful and certainly comments that we talk about quite often, you know, several months later. And then since June, all summer, not every waking moment, but certainly many calls and exchanges of documents, we've slowly built out the strategic plan, the bones of the plan that you're going to see today. Again, the board has signed off on it and we're sharing it with all of you tonight. Sorry. Strange. And, you know, and what were we looking at as we, as we delivered, as we started to build out the work? Well, we, I'm a big believer that if you don't have all of these things sorted out in a strategic plan, you can come up with great projects and ideas, and they'll ultimately fall down. So we invested a lot of time in what the true mission and vision of the organization are. You'll see that today. What the standards need to be, that anyone who's accountable to the OVA really need to follow, and we'll share those with you tonight, and what we're going to be the strategic priorities. So, you know, I just think you need to build the base first, and then the rest of it will come. The sustainable system piece is a big deal for me because I think a lot of people do strategic planning and then they tuck it away and they forget about it. And you're going to see today that this model is built out in a sustainable way. And I really believe that the work done in the last few months will be with the organization right through to 2025. We did a lot of work online in that meeting room in Ontario, sort of Toronto in December. And I just wanted to share some of those images with you. In fact, you know, some of the people in the room, in the Zoom room tonight may well have drawn this or this. These are all, this was a task where we asked people to draw out and describe what the framework of a provincial volleyball organization should look like. And so I shared this with you, and I could have shared five, six, seven times the number of images as I've done here tonight, just to show you that all of this work contributed ultimately to the product that is the strategic plan. The survey itself, just to give you a sense of the data and how many people participated, it was some, it was in line, Joanne, is it fair to say that it was in line with the numbers that came through the last time we did a community survey?
Yeah, I think there might have even been a stronger response on this one.
Yeah, so we were about 1,000. And you can see the, you know, the breakdown of groupings, because we did ask people to identify who they were. I was very impressed with the pace with which people responded and the quality of the responses. And this is really high level. This just gives you a sense from those surveys of what people told us. So the first row is everybody. And in terms of, we asked a question, what should the top priorities be for the OVA? And we listed a series of choices. And you can see, thank goodness, was my reaction, that developing athletes stood out among, you know, way out there compared to other things. And then after that was, you know, how do we get people engaged in volleyball for a lifetime? Not just between the ages of 15 and 19, or whatever it may be. And then how do we, how do, a priority has to be delivering quality programs and events. And you could see some diversity a little bit amongst the different groupings of people. But the colors help you see the trend is pretty strong that these three categories are super important to them. We also asked the question around opportunities, which is different. You can have a priority and an opportunity be two entirely different things, rank number one, and that people are saying different things. What we got from this was, here's what you've missed, maybe, or you haven't had a chance to lean into yet. And so you'll see that this, this isn't as clean as priorities, but some of the things that jump up are certainly, anything that relates to facilities, people, it doesn't matter what sport it is, hockey, football, basketball, volleyball. People want access to good facilities, fit-for-purpose facilities. I don't think you're ever going to get an A grade on that, Joanne, I hate to tell you. That's just the way it is. It's like communications. There's no A grade on communications. And then the relationships between the OVA and clubs and organizations was really important to people. So, and a whole other, you know, leadership-based, the development of our leaders in our sport was identified as being really important as well. So we took all of the drawings and pictures you saw and the survey feedback to heart. And we built a number of things. And one of the things we built, and if I just go back, I'm going to go back a couple slides here. And, you know, this, this drawing you see is a framework. And I just pick, I pick it just because it's easiest to see, and you can actually see some of the words here. It's a framework. The group was asked to put all the ingredients of a really successful provincial volleyball organization on a piece of paper. Put the ingredients there and then organize it in a way that makes sense to you. Well, we've taken the feedback from those exercises and the feedback from the survey and other conversations that we've had, and we built a recipe. Because ultimately, what you see here is the answer to the question, what are the ingredients of the most successful and effective provincial volleyball organization? Forget the colors just for a second. These three, these six items at the top here are what we call dimensions. And they're like a pillar, and they're shaped like a pillar as well. But ultimately, we landed on that the OVA is responsible for people, operations, program and events, athlete development, community engagement, and the further development of the organization and being creative or innovative. That's what ultimately the core ingredients of the recipe. Think about your favorite meal. Think about your favorite vacation. Think about your favorite car. They all have a recipe. There's some common thing there. And so that's what we got out of this exercise in talking to all of you and other people. And then with, within each of those dimensions, these are called elements. And they're the subcategories that make up the people. So it's pretty obvious that these elements make up a group of people in volleyball. If we skip ahead to athlete development, the things that make up what we know as athlete development are what do your pathways look like? What's the quality of your programming look like? Are you committed to the high performance, the top end of the pyramid piece? Are you also committed to the participation side? And what this framework provides the OVA with is a chance to, once you've established what the recipe is, is to grade yourself on an annual basis and actually to drive your, your actual work plan on an annual basis based on your grades. So I've included, everything is yellow for a reason, just to keep it neutral. And this isn't to say that anyone is grading out any of this based on this color. It's just an example. We aren't sharing the colors with the group today because they really haven't been completed. But I'm just showing you down here that the tool itself allows you to say, okay, well, in policies, we're a green. And we're in good shape. We're delivering on the mission and the vision. Plan is rolling to, as it should. But on communication tools, we're not great, and on risk management, we're broken. And these are literally just examples so you can get a sense of how this tool becomes a sustainable part of the strategic plan. So I can say that I've done this with a dozen organizations. And I have faith that this tool is the best built, best fit for purpose, and has the best chance to be utilized in the coming months and years of any that I've worked with. And I'm happy to put that on the record as I just did right now, because I know this is being recorded. I'm going to pause there just for a moment because Joanne and I really believe this is an important piece of the presentation. Joanne, anything to add with regard to the framework as we see it here?
I think the one thing, just to stress, is that we really liked having this as a tool. And that was the, that was the part that it would really keep us focused on being able to say, okay, where do we have a gap or what do we need to address? What do we need to keep doing? Because our strategic objectives from our previous plan would just be so many pages long. But this is a really quick way, well, and just a lot more summary to look at it and to be more focused. So that's the part that we really liked, and I liked how it would focus our discussion on then what strategic objective we'll need and filling the gaps a little easier.
So if one were to ask, how did the development of this, how was it manifested in feedback you heard through any of the stuff that we've done since December? I'm going to use community engagement as an example. We heard in the December session, we heard in the May sessions, we heard in the survey, we heard in the targeted community forums is, I think, I think OVA could do more to engage with the community in different ways. And here are some ideas on how to do that. But ultimately, this was built out based on that, Joanne. Is that not, isn't it fair to say that we really thought about, okay, well, what are the different ways we do community engagement? And when we go to grade ourselves every year, are we asking questions about communication, gathering feedback, genuine integration with the community? And how visible and accessible are we? Is that a fair example?
Yeah, that was, that was exactly, you nailed the gap that we had from our last plan. So the last plan didn't articulate this community engagement. So it's not that, you know, it was like completely not there, but it wasn't, as soon as you have it in this ingredient, it's a focus. So already under the feedback, which you're going to steal a bit of, you know, the next phase of the, of the, this town hall is, for example, a feedback piece where, and communication, where we want to make sure we're able to engage the community, have opportunities for questions and answers, have opportunities to really just share that information and engage the community in it. And that was what was identified to do the strategic plan, so how we ended up with Ron. So it's, it's really neat that we kind of really brought that right back into the plan. And so if you were to look at these ingredients, our other plan had them. We had operations excellence, our programs and events, our athlete development. All of those pieces from our last plan are in those pillars. And then we added other focus areas and really brought those to the forefront to make sure that we were filling our gaps. And that's the big piece with this plan that we're excited about is we know that with, like, this is how we're going to create a lot of synergy and further volleyball sharing throughout the entire province with the community engagement being really, really using innovation and our people, just increasing the knowledge of our people so that they can share volleyball in Ontario.
Thanks, Joanne. So, and how does it, the way it would manifest itself in making a difference for people in the volleyball community is whether it's community engagement or programs and events, as the OVA and partners look at these two pillars, if grades come up as yellow or red, that has to become part of the operational plan for the coming months. You know, and you're not going to make all these green. It's just not going to happen. But it allows, and Joanne's been great at emphasizing this kind of focused approach. It ensures, I believe, or there's a greater likelihood that you won't miss things because you're grading yourself so often. The, the other things that came that were really important, and actually, the organization's mandated to have this. I don't think this is a mandate. I think this is the most important piece of work, without question. Is to be, and I really think that the mission and vision of OVA prior to December of 2019 was really sound. Is to be, and I really think that the mission and vision of OVA prior to December of 2019 was really sound. This one has had a lot of hands on it, a lot of versions. You're never gonna make everyone happen, hap- happy, but here's, here are the mission and vision for the next five years. The mission is defined in my world as why you exist. So the OVA is an athlete-centered association, providing leadership and expertise in the growth, development, and delivery of volleyball in Ontario. We had lots of fun talking about words like expertise or athlete-centered, or you name it. Lots of different things. Vision is where you're going. Sometimes it's, it's practical, sometimes it's super ambitious, almost impossible to reach. To provide a fun, safe, and rewarding environment through a commitment to volleyball for life. Again, lots of debate. We kind of, there was a moment, Joanne, I think it's fair to say that we kind of just landed on that where everybody said, yeah, that's what we've been trying to do. The words are there. So congratulations on that. I, I, I think it's superbly pulled together and, and an accurate representation of what it is you do. What you see here and what you'll, you'll see in outward-facing documents from the organization is the mission and vision at the top. And then six strategic objectives that are linked to the, the framework pillars that you saw a couple slides ago. Okay, so again, people, operational excellence, et cetera, et cetera, are all listed here. And then there's a, a tagline that kind of represents what this means to the OVA. Each of these pillars, that I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read out. You can look at this, and you'll get your hands on this in an outward-facing document at some point in time. And then below this are some goals that are identified by the OVA related to these pillars that, if I just go back a more, a second, will ultimately be measured by the framework. Okay, so that, that everything links really strongly. And then before letting, having Joanne speak to these, actually, I'm gonna pause there and talk about standards afterwards. Joanne, anything to, to speak to regarding strategic objectives?
Um, I think just, what's coming to mind is just what we were talking about. How we utilize the tool of the framework and then deliver these goals. So that was something that it, it's, it's just still resonating with me, but I mean, Alicia, I don't know if you want to add anything, or Sue's just on. We, we really dived into these pillars. And I think, I mean, and we can share a little bit too, where we even expanded the volleyball programs, events, athlete development, and wanted to make sure to bring athlete development out with its own pillar or like focus area. So I think that was something that we're really excited about. We're excited about this plan and what we can do with it over the next five years. So I think the goals are sound and yeah, I, I don't know if I have anything else further this time.
Okay, great. Alicia, anything to add to this?
But I think another thing that came out of this really loud and clear with the old plan, just the way some of the wording was, it always seemed like it was like the association was doing everything, whereas when we were going through and walking through this plan, it was all about the holistic working together. You know, the club involvement, the staff involvement, and really try to switch the wording up. So it's about we're all the OVA, and this is how we're gonna work together. So I think you'll see that a lot more threads through this document. So I think that's just one more thing I wanted to highlight, just about this process, is now it's like, we're all working together to get through everything and be better on the other end. So that's all I want to add.
Well, and to, yeah, and to, to add to Alicia's was, that was also the change to from the strategic objectives of is making sure that the OVA is helping. I didn't want to say the OVA, like, the OVA is, as, as in Alicia was saying, not to create that. We wanted to make sure that we're empowering the community to deliver that volleyball and to share the knowledge, and then come together and share those best practices. And really, really bring the whole volleyball community together. And that was, that was part of what our goal was with this plan.
Thank you. So, I'm just gonna check on, yes, okay. So, so you've got this, you've got your reason for existing. Your, your direct, your direction, where you're headed. The way you're gonna do it are your pillars. What are the strategic plans that you've got? And then ultimately, at the bottom of the last slide, we're, we're what are called standards, and I'm often, or referred to as values. I'm, I'm pushing the agenda in the sport community in this country to, to move towards standards. I find that I oftentimes have conversations with organizations about values and their, they're debatable, they're emotional, whereas standards are clean, simple, black and white, standard operating procedure, if there's any military people in the crowd. So ultimately, you deliver as an organization on this overarching plan and on why you exist and where you're going by doing these things. And the way that I've worded it, I'm getting better at wording this, because I'm getting some practice with the OVA, is that anyone who's accountable to the OVA, whether it's a staff member, a board member, somebody who's working in a part-time role with the OVA, or is part of an OVA event, ultimately needs to, to line up to these standards. And it, these are all things I think most people in this country intend to do. We don't always do them. I, I, you know, I think it's easy to say you're gonna do it, it's harder to, to do it under, under duress or, or pressure. But I, I believe that your shifts that you make as an organization over the next five or 10 years will ultimately sit with your strength, your standards, you know, things like true collaboration under pressure is really hard. It's just easy to go, it's way easier as a human being to go it alone in so many different ways. Collaboration is hard, and I think you're in a great position to, to go the hard way and, and get all of the benefits from, from collaboration. Innovation is hard, and really understanding what innovation is, 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 is the first step, frankly. So these are your, these are your standards. The staff really leaned into this. We got feedback obviously from the community as well on this, but lots of work by the, by the OVA staff, great work on, on their parts to pull this together. And then Karish from OVA took all of this and put it into something that looked proper. And so these two slides just show you, you know, a perspective outward-facing version of this, the vision, the mission, the values, the standards that drive us as an organization, and then the pillars that are, that are broken down. So, you know, all of what you've seen are, are, it's the first time outside of board meetings or staff meetings, any of this is being seen. So the, the organization will decide kind of where we're going with it. But Joanne, that's my story to tell about my time with you and the incredible work that, that's been produced and you know, I say congratulations to everybody involved, and thank you to the people that are on the call today that participated in some way, shape, or form, whether it's completing the survey or being a part of that session in December or the, the forum. So happy, questions that may have come out, or, you know, anything at all before I break from you?
Um, yeah, I think Alicia, we'll see if we have any questions, but I would just want to echo that as well as that we were really happy to have the engagement from our members. When people came, they were on board with, as Ron's term is leaning in, and they did. So this is, we wouldn't have been able to create that without that, so, without your participation. So we thank you for that. So Alicia, I think, I think I saw someone's question.
Uh, yeah, so it says, will this plan be presented at the 2020 ATM?
Yeah, so the 2020 GM is obviously going virtual. So yeah, I think we'll have time to make some presentation and some more sharing around this plan. The board just actually approved this last week, so we're just getting in the, in the whole form of, you're the, our first run-through of presenting it. So again, we thank you for being an audience there. So I think there's a couple other chats in here.
Does her mic need to be turned on, or could you do it yourself?
Yeah, I'm good. Just, I, I just want to, sorry, I'm hoarse. Just want to say, first of all, I think this is awesome framework and, and much, much easier for the membership to understand and, and apply. I, I do have a couple thoughts. I don't know if it's absolutely final, but the one disappointment is the word club is not in this anywhere that I could see. And I know that some of the print is fairly small on my screen, so I may have missed it. But the OVA, in my mind, is really both a club and athlete-centered association. Because the clubs really are the ones who deliver the athlete-centered development type stuff for, for the most part, not completely. But I think in, in being sensitive to the community and what's been going on, I would have loved to see club at least named as, as an entity that exists within the structure. And, and that's really my, my only comment. But I, I do think it's an outstanding layout and, and process that you've gone through.
Yeah, so maybe, Brenda, thank you, and thanks for being there in December. I can't remember which one of those sheets was your group, but I know it was up there somewhere. The, the first thing, on the club thing, if you look at this, like, schools is not mentioned. Though there's no, it, it's, we don't mention schools, we don't mention club, this is just a non-volleyball guy talking. Is, we are just talking about the community. So that could be any, anybody who wants to be a part of the volleyball movement can do it. And there's no denying that, that so much of the stuff in the community engagement that's, that's a really, I think a good improvement from last strategic plan is based on club, club connection, but it's so that would be my first thought there. And then your comment on the coach side, you know, Brenda, I, you were, you were really clear in December. I can just tell you that in my role as the consultant, in all of the conversations, it was so clear that athletes had to be at the focus. That's my takeaway. It's, you know, I'm not, that's just my takeaway from all of the data, all the conversations that I've had since, since December.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, that was where the people focus come in, came in, as far as there is. There'll be a lot of strategic objectives around the club, and then also the club with the community engagement. The one thing with, and Ron has heard me quite extensively discuss this. If we look at our athlete and the athlete focus, this is not to eliminate the focus on clubs, coaches, referees, anyone else. We want to do the best we can for every different role that is within our volleyball community. But it still comes back to the experience of the athlete. Without the athlete, the sport doesn't exist. So that's something where it's like, it's like in your healthcare system, without a patient, the healthcare system isn't there. So the athlete is like, so our athlete-centered, they will be the focus. But there's still gonna be just as much effort to put into all the other roles around that athlete that creates that really quality environment and experience for the athlete. So, I mean, the OVA is committed to doing the, the support for the clubs. And I can't say enough about what an amazing job the clubs are doing right now in this difficult time. Because this is hard for everybody, but the engagement that the clubs and the effort that they've been putting into making sure that they are operating under this COVID is phenomenal. I mean, it's not, it's not even possible for some to operate, and they're still like jumping on the virtual, and we're trying to support other ways that they can still operate. I really commend them on that. It's not easy. I don't know, Alicia, you had any other questions or comments? Okay, I will continue just with a bit more. If anyone has any more questions for Ron, please throw them in the chat. And I'm just going to jump.
Joanne, I think, I think you're gonna, I'm gonna break away, if that's okay with you. Just because I think you're moving on to other bits and pieces. So I know you and I'll talk again. But thank you, everybody, for the chance to be a part of this, and I think you guys are in, in great shape with this plan, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. I mean, you really facilitated some great discussions with us. We really hammered through a lot of, a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it was my pleasure. Okay, all the best.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, I just wanted to take this opportunity to share a little bit about as we are in fiscal 2021. And we're jumping into, okay, we have a new plan now for five years. Obviously, we have some adjustments and some, just some adapt, adaptations we're gonna have to make to even operate in COVID. So this is a, a good opportunity to say, well, we're really breaking things down into very short term. So, and this is, you know, when I talk to the board, I'm like, okay, here's our next three to four months, and that's really how we're looking at it. To say, how can we operate over the next three or four months? What are the things that we're able to do? The staff have jumped on and are staying with the flow. It's not easy. We're having to like dig in, plan things, start from scratch again, plan something else. And it's challenging. And then just trying to also share that information through to the community and to support them. So there's been lots of just challenging times, along with trying to also push forward, how do we come out of this stronger? How do we come out as a stronger organization? And what have we learned from this COVID, and what are the things that we can keep and, and continue to work on? So fiscal 2021, as I said before, our fiscal year starts in September, so we're in it. I've actually divided the year into quads. So I'm really in the count through and through. So I was like, what is a four-month period called? I guess it's a quad. So this is September to December. We have some projects that we're tackling. And then we will plan our, our remainder of fiscal 21. Obviously, we have a plan for the year, but things can change, as we know, things change day to day, month to month. So we have some, some plans that are, are solid for the, the, the next four months. And I'll just share a few of those here. So obviously, return to play is just something that, in order to operate at this time, we have to make sure we have a good understanding of the government regulations. Indoor and outdoor, stage two and straight, stage three. So lots of things flying, lots of factors, lots of confusion when government makes announcements. It's still not clear whether the 10 people include a coach or not. But based on the government regulations, right now, if you're in a stage two area, it's 10 people in total. But again, very confusing, because previously you'd have things that were written that were saying the team staff don't count in the numbers. You know, so those are the things that we will continue to share as we get more information within our programs and events. The staff have been modifying the indoor season, what can happen under these current regulations. Obviously, we don't have crystal balls, so we're looking at, okay, here's different options. Finding facilities is obviously, as we all know, a huge dilemma. We keep working with our ministry, trying to also use our Ministry of Sport to get into the Ministry of Education contacts. Also using the Ministry of Sport to get into the community center and the recreation areas, anywhere we can, trying to share information around volleyball. Because as you can imagine, any, it's hard for us to stay on top of what can happen in volleyball. But imagine the facilities that are running where they have multi-sport activities. They don't know. I mean, we even shared and had a meeting with the OUA prior to their announcement last week of just how volleyball could run. And the CEO there, Matt, Matthew Davies, he even took that to say, here's how volleyball could operate, here's different options. But that's something that it's really difficult for any of those facilities and different organizations that have multi-sport to, to share. So from the volleyball perspective, we're sharing that wherever we can. And then we even are, we'll look into new opportunities. So Sue's is all over looking at snow volleyball, which, if you don't know, Google it, it's a trial Olympic sport. So it's pretty fun. But that's something that, trying to be creative, and this is something where it can actually be an advantage in the end, where we actually do get some snow ballers, some other activities running outside. Within our, the focus area under Operations Excellence, as you know, the registration system has been launched, we'll continue to upgrade that and make sure it's ticking. So the old NRS is now MRS for Membership Registration System. And that's something where the staff, if you have any issues, contact them. We'll be continuing to test and launch more capabilities under the system. Just our backend, we need to get stronger. So we're working on an upgrade to 365 that should help solve any of our email issues that we have. At times, we have trouble sending emails or receiving emails. And as we said, there's return-to-play protocols, but we also have to look to how those integrate with any of our safety policies. Um, with any of our, um, safety policies. Um, so those are things that are, um, uh, top of the mind for us. Um, our inclusion committee has been launched. Um, they're diving into some of our policies. They're looking at reviews. Um, and also some different areas that they want to, um, help with. Um, our team Ontario programming, um, obviously we have to adapt. Um, how are we going to, you know, um. Identify athletes, what Ontario team material program will be able to run next year. Um, we do have a government funding, um, it's obviously it's called Ontario High Performance Sport Initiative. Um, we have to figure out also how to deliver that programming. Um, and that's, um, always, uh, tricky to work through all those different things under this time. Um, we're really excited about a grant that we have, um, and it's something that, um. It is obviously, um, we've wanted to do it in our other plans as far as having further coach resources and mentorship opportunities. Um, but now we really get to, um, focus on it. Um, so, I mean, I mean, Alicia, I, what? Almost all of our staff are focused on launching the Coach Academy and our Referee Engagement Center. It's a grant that we received from Red Cross and it will really, it's not only just how to operate right now under these safe environments. But it's a continuation of a virtual learning platform, um, that will engage our community and provide opportunities for our community to share with each other. Um, so this one is, um, really exciting. Um, it's also, um, something that we wanted to take on. Um, knowing that some regions may not be able to actually play volleyball, but we do want to be able to still. Have the opportunity for the athletes to connect, um, socially, but also, um, have their own athlete development that can happen virtually. And we wanted to make sure that there was some content for the clubs and the coaches to be able to do that. Um, so that's something that however, um, you know, with throughout the province, whatever stage and whatever challenges you're dealing with. Um, with COVID, not having facilities, having facilities, um, you know, looking for other curriculum to run. Um, that's something where hopefully this, this should be the go-to place to go. Um, to get those answers. Uh, and as we talked about with community engagement. Um, lots of town halls, lots of sharing, um, lots of inquiries, um, to, um, also. Look back and, um, provide those answers through the town halls and we'll find some other, um, communication methods to also, um, share information. Um, and there's also been a coach mentorship, uh, learning opportunity that has been launched, um, at this time. So all those are super exciting. Um, and as I said, there's, there's lots, we could talk about volleyball, um, all night long, but if there's any questions, um, please let us know. I think Alicia's got.
So no questions in the chat right now, Joe?
Okay, um, that's great. Um, as far as, um, we're keeping you on time. Um, which is what we wanted to do and we wanted to take this opportunity to share some information. Um, so I'll just, uh, run through a bit more of our upcoming events while offending people when it comes up with some questions. Um, we do have some more town halls. So next week the Coach Academy launches, uh, so there's town hall. Um, we have some town halls open, uh, we are looking to see what topics. Uh, we will need to cover off, but we have kept, um, a running, uh, Monday nights open to, to run those. We have, uh, regional AGMs coming up for the regions, uh, November 4th, 5th and 6th. If you're not sure where you're going, just send us a message. Um, and then the OVA annual general meeting is the usual for Sunday in December. It will be virtual as, as mentioned. Um, we will look to see if there's any other topics, um, to cover off. Um, but we will also be sharing information at the regional AGMs. Um, talking a bit more about the, about this strategic plan, what you, uh, joined with us, um, the Red Cross, uh. I can't remember the whole agenda, um, feel free to jump in. And this is where if you would like to vote at the AGM. Um, you go through your regional meeting, um, to get voted in as a delegate. To then, um, vote at OVA's annual general meeting. And some of the items, um, on the agenda, um, for the OVA will be, we have a couple of board of directors spots that will, um. Uh, be open for some voting. So if you're interested in putting your name in for the board or voting, um, get to your regional AGM. Which will also be virtual.
Joe, quick question, um, will a call out for new business items be sent out to membership for the December AGM?
Oh, yes. Uh, that's probably a requirement. Um, I can't remember the exact date. But, uh, it will be posted. It's posted with, um, the meeting notice. Meeting notice goes up 30 days prior. Um, but feel free to me, email that, uh, that into me. Um, at my email address with the new business item and I will pass it to the board. For our chair.
All I've got right now.
Awesome. Did I miss anything? Sue's, Alicia. Sue's, this is when I want to play your like top 10 snow volleyball, uh, YouTube items. Uh, super fun. Um, so just so you know, snow volleyball is usually three on three. Uh, but again, we could modify and have, um, more athletes on the court. And, um, we're really interested because we hear that some clubs will be trying to. Run it even if there's not snow, just so they can keep the athletes playing and keep them outside. So. Uh, we will keep you up to date on how those go with some of the other areas. That may be the way we get through this COVID. But. We'll see. Okay. Well, if there's no questions, I thank you very much for joining us. Um, please look into your regional AGM. Um, and please look to some of our next town halls and don't hesitate to send in any of your questions to us. And we keep updating, um, those things on the, on the website. So. Thank you.